I know. Lady pleasan- Catwoman.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get the Planning Commission meeting started. This is the Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, February 6, 2013. Can I get a roll call, please?
Chairman Jennifer Whitman.
Here.
Vice Chairman Bridgette Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Anthony Bianchi.
Here.
Commissioner Chad Fuller.
Here.
Commissioner Joshua Ailer.
Here.
Commissioner Christopher Sipple.
Present.
Commissioner Bob Steiger.
Here.
Alternate Kyle Paul.
Here.
Thank you. I know that on our study session, as one of the agenda items which we probably won't need to discuss, was discussion of the regular agenda. So can I get an approval of the agenda, Vice Chairman?
I move to approve the agenda as it is this evening.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right, the next item is communications from citizens. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters that are not on tonight's agenda. The commission's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Is there anybody here tonight wishing to speak under those pretenses? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on. We'll move on to the public hearing consent items. Actually, no, sorry, I'm on the wrong. Oh, yeah, we are. Okay. And just to let you know also that there are public comment forms in the back of the room. I don't know if they're blue, or pink, or what they are today, but if you wish to speak on an item on the agenda tonight, please make sure to fill them out and bring them up to staff, and they'll get them up to us so that you can be heard on the matter you wish to discuss. So with that, public hearing consent, consent public hearing items will be heard at one public hearing. After the consent public hearing, these items may be approved by a single motion. At the request of a member of the commission or staff, an item may be removed from the consent calendar, and may be heard and acted upon separately. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent public hearing and approved under a single motion. With that, we'll open the public hearing, and the cases under the consent agenda are Agenda Item Number 10, which is Z12-14. It's a land code amendment to amend the procedures for appeals to provide a timeframe for hearing body to hear an appeal. Case number 11 is Z12-19, which is also a zoning code amendment, which changes the use definitions to amend the definition of schools, private or public, to include charter schools in the definition. Agenda Item Number 12, Z12-25, another amendment to the land development code to amend some graphic figures, and I won't go through all of them, because there's quite a few. And with that, we open the public hearing and invite anybody. Is there, do we have any cards? We don't seem to have any public comment cards on any of the agenda items we've just read. With that in mind, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the dais. Is there a discussion or a potential motion?
Chairman?
Commissioner, Vice Chairman Peterson?
I move to approve the items on our consent agenda this evening.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Vice Chairman Peterson, a second by Commissioner Bianchi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to the public hearing non-consent portion of our agenda, non-consent public hearing items will be heard at an individual public hearing and will be acted upon by the commission by a separate motion. During the public hearings, anyone wishing to comment in support of or in opposition to a public hearing may do so. If you wish to comment on a public hearing item, you must fill out a public comment form indicating the item in which you wish to be heard. Once the hearing is closed, there will be no further public comment unless requested by a member of the commission. And with that, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number 13, and actually, I'd like to open 13 and 14 together. It's the general plan amendment, as well as the companion zoning case. So it's GP12-10, a minor general plan amendment, changed to land use classification on approximately 11.13 acres, located northwest corner of Power Road and the Santan Freeway from light industrial to regional commercial. And the companion zoning case, which is a little bit larger, I think, than the general plan amendment area. It's at 44.8 acres of light industrial and 29.6 acres of regional commercial, and there's a PAD overlay with that as well. And with that, we'll invite Mr. Al Ward and open the public hearing. Thank you.
Chairman Whitman and members of the Planning Commission, thank you very much. This is the American Furniture Warehouse, PAD. As you mentioned, it's located on the north side of the Santan Freeway, immediately west of Power Road. This was formerly a 74-acre site known as Cooley Station at Power and Santan, and there was an overall PAD developed or essentially established with a zoning on that, showing light industrial and regional commercial zoning. And the request now is to modify that to increase the amount of regional commercial on the overall 74-acre site and decrease the amount of light industrial. So this is the conceptual overall site plan and what's being looked at. The area in white is the American Furniture Warehouse, which is on 40 acres of land, leaving approximately 33 acres to the west, shown in alfalfa green, for the future industrial setting, future industrial development, I should say. Course access, primary access would be from Power Road on the east. There's a local collector on the north side, known as Nanelli Road, and that's going to actually serve as the main access into the site, in addition to the access coming off of Power. Again, as I mentioned, the previous zoning on this PAD was the Cooley Station Power and Santan. It was 74 acres, 44 acres of light industrial, 29 acres of regional commercial. And this current proposal is a request to add 11 acres to the regional commercial, making it approximately 40, and reducing that approximately a similar amount, the light industrial, from 44 to 33. Again, that original PAD had some, no amended development standards, but it did have conditions, street dedication, utility buy-in, conformance with the gateway area, streetscape standards, design standards, and a property owners association. Just wanted to show you the overall site plan, development plan that was approved with that. Now, this is all going to get modified with the American Furniture Warehouse PAD. This is the 11 acres, going from light industrial, land use category, land use classification to regional commercial. So that's the area of 11 acres. You mentioned in the overview that the zoning is a bigger area than the general plan. The reason because, the reason that is, is because the PAD is being amended with the zoning case. So we just have to change 11 acres of underlying land use classification under the general plan, but overall, there's a total of 74 acres in the PAD which is getting changed out with this. So this shows how that 11 acres will go from the light industrial to the regional commercial area to provide for the site plan that I had indicated previously. So again, specifically, this is a PAD for American Furniture Warehouse. There's amended zoning districts to create a larger regional commercial district. There's amended development conditions. There's a new development plan, and this proposes a large-scale retail furniture store, which is a permitted use in the regional commercial zoning district, and there's a development plan for that, for that large-scale furniture store. This kind of just goes over the acreage again, only 11 acres involved from the general plan amendment when we get into the zoning district. We're moving the same 11 acres, however, the PAD covers all of the 74 acres, and specifically to the proposed 40-acre development area of the furniture store. So this is what we're looking at with the new development plan. 40.73 acres gross, situated along the eastern side of the property for regional commercial with the remaining future development, more light industrial to the west. And there's just kind of a, a little bit of a bubble diagram showing how that'll develop. The main connecting road between both of these is Nanelli Drive along the north side, Nanelli Road, excuse me. And then you can see the parking is on the east side of the furniture store, between it and Power. The furniture store itself is set back a full 500 feet off of Power, so we have the parking field there. And then we have the large warehouse, which is strictly associated with this showroom. It's not a distribution center for any other furniture store. This would be furniture which would be sold at this store with the truck yard at the rear. So you can see that the large trucks would come in and deliver traffic, deliver trucks, make that deliver furniture at the rear, and these would be picked up, sold at the showroom, and then picked up at individual loading docks on the, on the east side of the site. I just wanted to show you the elevations. Obviously, these are going to be dealt with by the design review board. The third one from the top, you can see, that's the rear loading dock, 52 roll-up doors for different panel trucks, semi-trucks. And American Furniture Warehouse not only will receive deliveries, but they own have their, they have their own truck fleet, too. Did I say something askew there? I apologize.
It's 52.
52 roll-up doors.
52 bays, yeah.
And then on the east side, you can see, that's the top one. That's where the customers would pick up. There's 21 doors there. So essentially, the very large warehouse containing 450,000 square feet, and the furniture showroom, 150,000 on the north side. Very large, 14 acres under roof. There's a list of the amended conditions in order to make the whole site plan work. There's some increased distance between the parking lot spaces, modification to allow a fire lane along the south boundary of the property, rooftop mechanical screening, visibility of that, bicycle parking requirements are being reduced, building-mounted lighting heights are being increased because of the large trucks and the required distance for this lighting to be seen around the truck loading areas, basin depth modifications and landscaping modifications. And then there's one additional one that has been handed out to you, and that has to do with the rear landscape here. I just wanted to show you what's the shopping center immediately south of the freeway. You can see that, I didn't really go in too close, but I did want to show you that it's really, the standards are really not that significantly different. What they have are increased distances between the landscape islands, this is known as Gilbert Gateway Town Center, increased distances over the current code for the landscape islands, central diamond, parking lot diamond, and enlarged landscaped pedestrian links between the two, and also widened landscape areas for the primary corridors for traffic with the interior of this center. So in other words, that's really almost identical to the same things that are being proposed with the, with the amended standards up, up at American Furniture Warehouse. Essentially, we have increased distances between the parking lot islands, and enhanced pedestrian connections, enhanced main drive aisles, and a concentration of the open space within the parking lot area. So I guess the amenity of the modifications of the open space in the parking lot area, first of all, the overall open space is maintained. Secondly, the overall number of trees are maintained, as would be provided on a standard eight-stall separation distance between landscape islands, and then the landscaping is a little bit more concentrated in, to be a little bit more of an amenity within the overall area. So this is our, our overall analysis. This is going to replace the 2007 Santan, Cooley, Cooley Station Power Santan PAD. 40 acres of the site will be for regional commercial, large-scale furniture. Remaining 33 acres will be, we know that'll be a viable industrial use in the future after this development comes in. There's actually eight amended development standards, and then a new PAD and development plan proposal. Essentially, we've had neighborhood meetings, there's been a neighborhood meeting, and there's no, there's no opposition, there's no, we have not received any opposition whatsoever. There is a position to conform with the gateway area development standards, streetscape standards, and that's being handled specifically through the, through the design review board. There's, there's lighting, there's amenities, and there's also open space standards along, along Power Road to try to put a consistency between what's being developed on this site and the area to the south. So with that, that concludes my presentation. Staff does recommend approval subject to the conditions, which we've carefully worked out with the applicant. Staff is agreeable to it, subject to those conditions, and I'd be pleased to answer your questions. I know the applicant is here as well with his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Are there any questions or comments for staff? Commissioner Steiger?
Just one quick question, Al. I noted the, I guess, I'm not sure if it was a condition, but the elimination of the requirement for landscaping in the retention basin, based on where it's located, what backs up to it. And I was just wondering, it'll still be rocked, though, right?
Oh, yes, DG.
Thank you.
And I could just elaborate a little bit. That is in the westerly truck yard. It's fully screened and fully secured. There's an eight-foot separation fence around it, and a significant row of landscaping along the west boundary to, to assure that there's no direct views of this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments for staff? Commissioner Bianchi?
Al, did design review look at this in the study session, or have they already looked at this previously? I guess my question is, I know we had talked about it when we saw it last month, with the intensity of the use kind of being as a gateway to Gilbert. It looks like there's quite a bit of front landscaping off of Power. I don't know if there's some birmingham there, but, I mean, anything that kind of hides the intensity of the use, but as a gateway, but as well as gives them the visibility they need.
Commissioner Bianchi, yes, the DRB has seen this in study session. It's coming up next week, December, December, make that February 14th.
Back in time.
And they, they, they've given us some direction on, on the site development, elevations, landscaping, but there was really nothing that, that was a real issue for them. As you mentioned, the frontage landscape area is wider than required, 25 foot required, and this is 25 to 50. And we talked about the, you know, the views and landscaping, and subject to the conditions coming up at the next meeting, they seem to be reasonably okay with it.
Yeah, I was just curious about just seeing that sea of asphalt that you come into town. So, thank you.
I do want to mention, Commissioner Bianchi, that there is over a 2-acre in the southeast corner, the immediate southeast corner is one of the largest significant retention basins on the site. So right at the immediate intersection of the 202 and Power, on the, right on the corner, is going to be a very large, very large landscaped open space area.
Okay, thanks, Al.
Thank you.
Okay, question for you. The additional stipulation or the amended condition that we received tonight, can you explain to me where that's located on the, on the project?
Yes, the area is located immediately along the west property line of the, of the 40 acres. This entire area is a retention basin, and it's in a secured walled area, eight-foot separation fence, and this area would have landscaping immediately along the property line. However, this entire basin is just going to be, is not going to be landscaped. It's at the rear truck loading yard of the site, and the stipulation provides that the requirement for open space landscaping would be waived. It'd just be a straight retention basin with no landscaping provided.
So essentially, the depth of the landscape setback is still being provided, just the landscaping materials won't be provided in that area?
That's correct. The landscaping will only be provided immediately along the separation fence on the west boundary. The full basin will have no landscaping whatsoever, except for that area against the fence.
Okay. And then I, I think we've spoken about this before, but I just want to confirm that the PAD amendments that are included as part of this are only applied to the regional commercial, not to the light industrial portion of the project?
Yes, that is correct. It only applies to the regional commercial 40-acre site. It's not applicable to the other portion. There's no amended development standards for the industrial area, provided with this PAD.
Okay. Any further questions for staff? Thank you, Mr. Ward. We'll go ahead and invite the applicant up. If you could just state your name and address for the record, that would be great.
Do you think it's this one here? It's, just give that one or the one next to it. Yeah. It's, no, it's this. It's back to that one? It's that shaded one, so it would be this one right down here. There you go, and then you hit the slide. And you can just go. Perfect. Yeah, that'd be great. Well, how do I do it? Just go to the right here? No. There we go. Okay.
Madam Chairman, members of the commission, for your record, Mike Withy, representing American Furniture Warehouse. With me are representatives from American Furniture Warehouse and Butler Design Group, who are the architects and planners, as well as deal withers. So hopefully, we can answer any questions that you have on the project. I'm going to be relatively brief. I think Al's done a really good job. We have worked very, very hard with them over a very short period of time to make this project come to fruition, and I think everybody's really excited for it to happen and making things happen on a very short timeframe. I think staff's done an excellent job. I would just say upfront that we're fine with the stipulations and with the additional stipulation that Al handed out, and would ask that you approve it per that recommendation. I guess I did want to say a few things, though. We're very, we're very excited, and I'm actually really proud to be here. This is a, I think, a new and a first for Gilbert, and maybe the East Valley, and arguably Arizona. It's a multimillion-dollar investment by AFW. It's 300-plus new jobs for the town of Gilbert, and it's millions of dollars in tax revenues. We really feel like this is obviously an ideal location at the freeway interchange, but it's also going to be a regional draw, not just from Gilbert, but for the entire southeast valley. Don't know how much you know about AFW, American Furniture Warehouse, but a great company. They're from Colorado. They have an amazing reputation in the state of Colorado, been unbelievably successful. And as I said, this will be their first operation here in Arizona. From a land use perspective, I think it's pretty straightforward. As you can see from the screen, the property is already zoned, regional, commercial, and light industrial. And really, just the main purpose of this land use case is to expand the regional commercial and additional 11 acres. So in essence, sort of to move the regional commercial line to the west a little bit for the AFW facility. The light industrial, which is on the west part of the site, remains exactly the same. So in the, in terms of any land uses to, for those neighbors to the west, nothing is changing. And the light industrial will remain. It will be developed at a later point in time, and continue to be, remain in its agricultural vacant land status until development would occur. As Al mentioned, we did do an outreach program. We sent out letters. We did an open house, talked to a number of people, both north and west of the site. We've had great, very good conversations. I'm not aware of any opposition. I know there may be a couple of people here tonight, I'm not sure, but we've, we've been very happy with the response that we've gotten. I think people are excited to see AFW come, they're excited to see the freeway interchange site develop, and as I said, the light industrial is remaining the same. So with that, again, we're fine with the staff recommendation, with the additional one added by Al, and we'd ask that you approve it per the staff recommendation, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Mr. Withy. Are there any questions for the applicant? I don't believe so.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll open it up to the public hearing, or the citizens. We have, we have one request to, well, I'm not sure if it's a request to speak or not. Mr. Ed Baker indicated that he's opposed to this item, but didn't indicate whether he wishes to speak or not. Okay, please come up. You can state your name and city in which you reside.
Madam Chairman and Commission, yeah, Ed Baker, resident of the town of Gilbert, immediately to the west of this property on Caroline Lane. First off, I'm not sure how the notifications went out for the neighborhood meetings, but, or any requests for input prior to this notification that I received for the meeting tonight. I was never notified, and I'm within the 300-foot boundary that should have been notified. As far as the request for the amended facility use, I really don't have any problems with the, the space and the parking, and so on and so forth, as far as the, the landscape footage. My concerns are the, the building-mounted lights, the height for those lights. As, you know, you have previously stipulated that those lights should be, I believe it's no more than 14 feet on the building-mounted lights. My concern is obviously the, excuse me, the environmental impact for the light diffusing into the residential area. Second off, the screening of the retention basin, the refuge containers, and the rooftop mechanical equipment that will be on this building. We live in Gilbert, and we like to, you know, keep it nice and obviously beautiful as we can. I would request that we consider how we're going to screen those facility, how the screening is going to be maintained, the refuge containers, and so on and so forth. The, you know, as stated in standard commercial and industrial site plans, trash containers should be fully opaque screening, with fully opaque screening gates, and also rooftop mechanical equipment should be fully screened by either one of the following methods, a parapet wall, or located with, behind roof panels. So I would really request that we reconsider those amended points, please. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. I don't know if you're aware or not, but this plan will need to go through design review still, and at that time, the design review board will make sure that the architectural elements are established and maintained with the design if the center is, goes through and is approved, to make sure that the code requirements are adhered to, including the screening for the mechanical equipment on top of the building, as well as the trash enclosures. It's not something we typically handle here. It's typically handled the design review board. But is there questions or comments or issues concerning the use that you're concerned about, or is it more design-related?
I think I'm perfectly fine with the, the amended request for the, the rezoning, the site plan as far as that goes. I'm just concerned about the, the final product, what we're going to have to look at and deal with from a light standpoint, and obviously the, the area, so.
Great. I think Mr. Al, or Mr. Ward had mentioned earlier that this goes to the design review board next week, I think, in their full public hearing, which is also available for public to attend. So you might want to visit with staff after this meeting to discuss any concerns that you might have in the applicant, and maybe they can be addressed, and then essentially, or they could also be brought up at the, the design review board meeting as well.
That'd be great.
Are there any questions for the public? Commissioner Steiger?
Just one comment. You brought up some of the same things that commission members did during, that we brought up during the study session, and I know that you don't have the opportunity to see some of the study session notes, but I was going to mention to Mr. Ward that this is a great example of when comments that the commissioners had, I brought up the same one you did about the lights, with the concern about the trespass, and what are the, what are the lumens or foot candles off the property? And Al said that they already had that study, but what, what this is a great example of is in the study session, many of the same concerns that you had were brought up by the members of the commission, and Al either had answers, or that they were included in what we got. So thanks for your participation, bringing the questions up, and we share, a lot of us share some of the same concerns, and they were answered in a positive manner.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Any further questions for Mr. Baker? Right, thank you. I don't have any additional cards from the public wishing to speak on this matter. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak? Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and invite the applicant back up. I don't know if you have any further remarks, Mr. Withy?
Madam Chairman, or the commission, just very briefly, we'd be happy to, we'd like to meet with you, maybe afterwards, and we have Jeff and Clay from Butler Design Group, and I think you guys know them and their reputation, and they've looked at all these kind of design issues that he mentioned. So we'd love to talk with you, and I think can share with you that information. And primarily, when we have met with folks from your neighborhood, the main thing was they didn't want 180th back there, behind their neighborhood, without, with traffic, and they wanted to make sure that whenever the light industrial got built, that there'd be a wall. But I just wanted to clarify for you that the light industrial, which is behind your house, is not changing in any way, and we're screening the west side of the AFW facility. So the remaining land behind you will still be vacant until, so. I think there was a little bit of miscommunication, maybe in some of the responses. They thought that, some members of the neighborhood might have thought that AFW was going all the way to the property line, and not this big amount of light industrial that'll still be there. So I think we're, I think from the conversations we've had, we're on the same page, and we'll be happy to meet with Mr. Baker and answer any and all questions that he has prior to the DRB hearing. So again, thank you very much, and we'd just ask that you approve the case per the staff recommendation.
Great, thank you, Mr. Withy.
Thank you.
Mr. Ward, do you have any additional thoughts or comments?
Just on the lighting, that will be looked at closely, the standard parking lot lighting's 25 feet. These are actually up to 28 feet, so they're not too much difference than a typical. And we do have a photometric analysis, which we'll be going through with the designer review board. It does show a, meeting the standards at the property line, which is a .3-foot candles. So all the lighting on the site will be cut off to just about zero, about time it reaches the property line. The building-mounted lighting will be full cutoff, so in other words, it wouldn't be directed outward. Very controlled throw of that light toward, toward. Very controlled throw of that light toward, out, you know, down versus out.
Great. Any comments or questions for staff? Thank you, Mr. Ward.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the dais for comments. Or possible motion?
I think as far as...
Commissioner Bianchi?
I think as far as benefits, I mean, staff had told us and the applicant, I agree with all of them. I think it's a very intense use. It's sales tax dollars. It's an employment use right off the freeway. So I like to see that even with the large truck traffic generated, it's right off the freeway, so they won't be traveling extensively on town streets. So I think that's a benefit. And whatever benefit this facility gets being close by to Gateway Airport. So I'm in favor of it. If anybody else has any comments, if not, I'm happy to make a motion.
Okay. Any additional comments?
If not, then I would...
Vice Chairman Peterson?
No.
Oh, no? Okay.
If, I would move to recommend to the town council approval of GP 12-10.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Bianchi, a second by Commissioner Steiger. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, vote passed unanimously.
And we've got to do zoning.
Oh, zoning as well. Sorry about that. So is there a motion for a zoning case?
Sure, I'll roll on with it. For the reasons set forth in the staff report, I would move to recommend approval to town council of Z 12-27, as requested, subject to the amended conditions.
Second. Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Bianchi, a second by Vice Chairman Peterson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passed unanimously. Okay, moving on, we have administrative items. Agenda item number 15 is the minutes. Consider approval of the minutes of the study session and regular meeting of January 2nd, 2013. Commissioner Bianchi, any changes?
I did not have any. Did anyone else?
I did.
Commissioner, Vice Chairman?
I like when I can beat Commissioner Bianchi at something. Just for Margot, Commissioner Sippel's last name is spelled a couple different ways throughout the minutes. I've noticed that, so I think if she just does a search and replace, it'll probably be easy to fix it, but it's, I know it's a little confusing. I have one of those first names. So that's my only change, is just to check for Sippel, from S-I-P-P-L-E to S-I-P-P-E-L.
You know, I've got to admit, you guys take good care of me, last name is Bianchi.
All right. With that, do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve with that change.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Moving on to communications, report from chairman and members of the commission on current events. Vice Chairman?
I always have something to report. I wanted to report that the farmer's market, even though Gilbert Road is closed at the moment, it will be back open. It may actually already be back open, or will be Friday. And the farmer's market is still there on Saturday mornings, every Saturday morning, down under the water tower. And they also have a second location on Wednesday evenings, down at the barn at Power Ranch. And they're from like 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. They have food trucks come out. They have their, they hold their farmer's market inside the barn, which is great, because it doesn't matter if it's hot, cold, sunny, you know, raining, you can still go down there. And I also wanted to mention a fundraiser that I passed out to all of you this evening for Gilbert Leadership mural project that will be hopefully, potentially on the side of the Legion Building on Gilbert Road. There's a huge bear wall that faces the south side, and they intend to put a beautiful mural there, and they need to raise funds to do that. Every Gilbert Leadership class has to do a project, and they have to raise their own money to do the project. They're holding this fundraiser at Oregano's on Monday, February 18th. If you need a flyer, just contact me. I'd be happy to get them to you. And also, the Chick-fil-A Leader Cast will be held in May, on Friday, May 10th. Gilbert, right now, is the only east valley location that Leader Cast will be held in. It is being sponsored partly by Gilbert Leadership and the Gilbert Chamber. And if you purchase tickets before mid-March, they are $10 cheaper than they will be after mid-March. So if you're interested in that, you can also see me, or go to Chick-fil-A's website, or the Chamber's website.
Does your mural go through design review?
Does what?
Does your mural go through design review?
I don't think it goes through design review, but...
It's not a permanent...
It's always the town council and redevelopment and...
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional comments? Okay. With that, Councilmember Daniels, welcome. We're so happy to have you here.
Thank you. I'm so glad to be here tonight, and I will be a regular at your meetings now. And I'm thrilled to see the planning and expertise that you all have go into planning Gilbert. This is wonderful, and I appreciate your time, your effort, and your energy that you contribute. Thank your families, too, since I know it's at least one likely more evenings away from them. Just a couple different updates. Bridget, you said Gilbert Road. We recognize that that's been a struggle for a lot of community members. Due to water main break, we did have to shut down both lanes of traffic on Gilbert Road. It is scheduled to reopen tomorrow at 5:00 p.m. I just got confirmation from Edgar Medina, our town engineer. So 5:00 p.m. tomorrow. Until then, use Lindsay or Cooper. And every project has a silver lining, right? They were able to include pedestrian improvements when they fixed the road. So now you have full sidewalk access along Gilbert Road on both sides of the street. So if there is a silver lining to having a water main break, we just got new sidewalks in downtown Gilbert. Gilbert has been identified, many of you probably have seen the articles, as the fastest-growing community in the state. We expect national rankings to come out in the near future, and we do expect to be somewhere high on those lists as well. So the next closest municipality was Phoenix. We had 50% more permits. So all things you guys probably already know, but you guys have done most of the legwork for that, so we appreciate your efforts on that. Tomorrow night, 6:30, Mayor's State of the Town, doing a little different format this time, a digital State of the Town. You can livestream it at home. And if you are so inclined, the Chamber of Commerce has the mayor's update luncheon tomorrow, $35 at the DoubleTree, and you can get the preview of the Mayor's State of the Town. On our agenda for tomorrow night is the intermodal master transportation plan. We were told the other night that they like to give fancy names to big strategic plans, but really, this is something that I think probably is of interest to all of you, and I would imagine that as stakeholders' programs or processes move forward, you guys will be included in many ways. So just it's on the horizon, and with council approval tomorrow night, we expect to enter into both ADA compliance and then also the transportation master planning for the community for many years to come. And last but not least, it's budget season. And so lots and lots of departments and staff have been involved in collaborating for our budget for fiscal year 13, 14, and so far, so good. So I'll keep you guys up to date if there's any red flags or anything coming forward that will affect the community as a whole. But all in all, things are looking bright in Gilbert. So, thanks.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Daniels. Moving on to agenda item number 18, report from the Planning Services Manager on current events.
I just have a follow-up to Councilmember Daniels' remark about residential building permits. In 2011, we had 63. In 2012, we had 159. And in 2013, we had 174, and those were the permits for the month of January. So we are continuing to grow quickly.
What were the 13 numbers? I'm sorry?
174.
174 for last month, January.
January, okay.
So the entire year of 2012 in one month, and then some?
No, these were January numbers.
January.
January numbers.